Looks like it's 6:30. I will call the meeting to order as soon as I read the suggested disclaimer. In accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Information and connection linked to the meeting are provided on the Town of Plymouth's website at plymouth-nh.org. So I'll call the meeting to order and I will do a roll call of members. Phil?
Here.
Mary Ann?
Here.
Mike Ahern?
Here.
John?
Here.
Carl?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Um, Steve?
Here.
Susan?
Here.
And Zach, since you're on my list and I see you there.
You're as well, yes.
Okay, so, um, since we do have a full slate of board members this evening, I'm going to just ask the alternates to participate as part of the discussion, but you won't be able to vote this evening. And I did hear from Mike Bouchard, our third alternate, and he will be joining us as soon as he can. All right, let's move on to a review of the minutes from our March 18th meeting. Comments from the board on our March 18th minutes.
I just have one very small formatting comment. It's like very minor, but on page three, Lamorau stated he was concerned about how long the blah, blah, blah. And then Hanson presented a list of potential candidates. That might just be a paragraph break. It's not really a content issue at all.
I'm not sure if I'm seeing this.
It's right before the bullet points of like eight bullet points, whatever it is.
Okay, so I'm going to present a list of potential conditions?
Yeah, it seems like a separate issue than the issue about the flood area.
Oh.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Different topic.
Okay. I think that would bring clarity to the minutes.
But no content issues?
I had one content thing and it's at the, just at the very beginning. I think we should make it clear that we do the roll call and then who we're inviting to participate as part of the, the, as of the alternates. And I think we made Mike Bouchard a voting alternate. Right, and did we have Susan as well because we were missing somebody? Okay. So we just had Mike Bouchard was voting. And I think it says in parentheses, but I think it might make it just more clear that I'm actually who I'm inviting of the alternates. And to that, I'm not sure if it makes sense to, in the roll call of members, to mark who's an alternate as well, just so we can denote who is, who are voting participants in a given meeting. Any other comments, edits for the minutes? Perhaps someone would like to make a motion to approve these minutes?
How much when we approve the minutes with the two edits as noted?
Thank you, Phil.
I'll second.
Thank you. I will read the roll. All right, motion on the, oh, any discussion about the minutes? And the motion on the table is to approve the minutes as amended. Mike Ahern? You're on mute.
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
As it was in here, I'll abstain.
Thank you. Mark?
I'll abstain as well.
That leaves me. And I, for me, did I miss anybody that is a voting member? Okay, trying to take good notes here, so minutes are approved as amended. All right. Next up, um, public comments not related to an application or other public hearing on the agenda. Are there any comments from the public this evening? All right, I'm seeing none. We did receive an email comment from the public. June, did you see that in the public comment section or in the communications from the board or perhaps right in between?
Probably the communications would be the better place. It just came late today, but.
All right.
Can I, can I interrupt for a minute? Did, maybe I missed it, but did we read the disclaimer that allows us to meet remotely?
Yes.
Okay, I guess it wasn't paying attention. Thank you.
It's my favorite part, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't miss that. Um. All right, so communications received by the board. June, do we have anything aside from the, the one letter? Okay. And you, and it's your, and so I'll read the letter.
Or do you want me to, I have it actually on a, I copied it into a Word document so I could put it on the screen?
That's great. I also did the same thing.
Maybe that would be.
Okay. I will share this. Now, this is a comment pertaining to zoning. I'll note that we are, we do have some zoning discussion later on. It's more big picture zoning stuff and what our next steps are. And some more informational stuff about zoning, but I will read this. You can follow along. Let's see if I can make this a little easier for you to see the whole thing. Okay. You guys need me to make it bigger font? I don't see everyone's faces super close to the screen, so, okay. We're writing to give our feedback on the discussion about proposed zoning changes in general and specifically to the agricultural zone. From our observation, these proposals originated from people who live in Plymouth who participated in forums years ago that were held in the effort to develop goals and visions that would guide the updating of Plymouth's master plan. We both participated in these community forums. And this is from Todd Moore and Grace Garvey. I should have said that at the beginning. Plymouth master plan was approved and from there we observed the planning board trying to implement goals, implement, identified through the community forums that became part of the plan. Grace personally sat through many planning board meetings while some of the current board members and several past board members worked tirelessly in developing a strategic way to implement change, the changes the master plan outlined. During the community forums, many expressed that they would maintain the rural character of Plymouth and therefore a lot of discussion revolved around the agricultural zone, a zone by which, a zone which by definition and mostly by historic land use was rural in nature. Many of you are worried that because there were no limits on what one could do within that zone, i.e. you could buy a shopping mall, I think that should be built, junkyard, farm, or residence, maintaining Plymouth's character. We believe this is where three proposals to change the agricultural zone came from. Change the zone name. As we understood it, there has been some confusion around that zone because of its name and hence this proposal was to clarify the zone and minimize confusion. This proposal from our perspective was never intended because it was a broken name or to prevent agriculture from occurring in that zone. Perhaps as a joint solution for now is that it could call it rural slash agricultural, RA. Two, create larger lot sizes. In our observation, this proposal was an effort to address the goals that we all seem to have in common, maintaining Plymouth's rural character. Perhaps some more discussion between diverse community members could reveal other ways to accomplish this goal. Three, clarify what activities were allowed in this zone. This is something that, something many communities have done so that there is dedicated space for certain activities. We live in what is now known as the agricultural zone. We specifically bought our homestead land and just purchased another 20 plus acres because of the rural character. We personally would not a car wa, would not want a car wash or amusement park to be constructed in our neighborhood. Perhaps more discussion between diverse community members could reveal other ways to accomplish this goal. It's a good time to point out that when people ask why make changes when things are not broken, that the master plan is meant to be preventative. A master plan is a community blueprint for the future which helps guide regulatory changes, land use policies, decisions around budgets. A master plan helps direct decision making on a community's long-term development over a period of decades or even generations. In these ways, it's forward focused. In closing, from our observation, Plymouth is and will continue to feel development pressure with potentially positive and negative outcomes. We feel being forward focused by working to implement the goals of the master plan, by sharpening and clarifying the zones and identifying where certain types of development are most appropriate will help achieve a common goal to maintain the rural character of Plymouth, signed Irene Grace Garvey and Todd Moore on Texas Hill and Plymouth. Okay. Other, no other communications, June? Thank you. Reports from town committees. Do we have anything from the economic development folks? No, any select board updates, Mary Ann?
Gosh, I'm not prepared for that. You would think I would be prepared for that. I'm trying to, we voted in, Bill's still the chair, so we voted in and we chose committees. I'm sure there's more, just give me a minute.
Um, and June, I think, I'm sure we all saw the information about what's going before the ZBA and the zoning ordinance requirement that we all received that information. So, so now we don't, if anyone, planning board member wants to also be on the ZBA, assuming they have room for members, there is, our bylaws and the state planner's handbook encourage us having a planning board, zoning board representative on both boards, so. So if you can't get enough of this stuff, maybe consider joining the ZBA. And we have, and also same with the conservation commission. We haven't had a rep on the conservation commission in over a year or so. Be great to have a conservation commission planning board member as well. All right. Next up.
I have a question concerning written letters or emails and how they get selected to be read during the planning board meeting. Couple of weeks ago, I asked if there was any correspondence from Market Basket concerning the ag zone. And I don't know if I got a definitive answer, but it definitely wasn't read. But yep, the one from Grace Garvey was read today. And I just don't know how you select which letters you want to read.
For me, it has to do with time. I don't remember the ag zone, are you talking about the ones, or sorry, the market basket one? Are you talking about the letters in support for the, for the?
It was a letter that Market Basket had written to the planning board. And I don't know what it says, but I was, I asked and someone, I think, might have said, yes, they did receive something. I think you said you weren't sure and, but it wasn't read. So I don't know how you get to decide, how it's decided which letters to the planning board are read during the meeting and which ones are just kind of put off to the side.
I don't think any letters are just put off to the side, at least certainly not intentionally. So, you know, I think in general, this one came in late, so the board couldn't read it beforehand. And this was our only correspondence of the evening. I've not, I, the Market Basket letter, I guess I'm not sure which meeting that's referring to, so.
So I guess the, yeah, it's really about the timing and this one that was read tonight just came via email. I don't remember, five o'clock or something. So it was partly my judgment call to make sure that Rebecca had seen it and decide, do you want to go ahead with just reading it tonight? Because we didn't feel like there was time to share it with the entire board. It's not much time to have people checking email. You know, we're trying to get information to the board members about a week ahead of time. So my goal is on a Friday before the Thursday planning board meeting, the Friday before, to send out the agenda, any correspondence that we've received, minutes, you know, application materials, that sort of thing. So that's what we've been trying to do. And usually within there, if there's correspondence, we'll include it. Do we miss some things occasionally? Yes. But, you know, I try to keep some good lists about that. So in terms of reading them, I do think it's, you know, a judgment call in the chair. And I seem to recall at times Rebecca has said, planning board members, you do see all that and if, you know, people are nodding their head and they got it in their packet, then that, that kind of surfaces. Because again, it's, it's correspondence to the board. You know, we could have held off this one tonight till next meeting because of the lateness of it, but here we are. So she, we decided to go ahead with it, so.
Was there a letter?
I think you, I think you raise an interesting point though, Mike, because if we had gotten six of those tonight, I certainly wouldn't want to be reading at the screen for however long that took. So I would welcome any suggestions from the rest of the board on how to handle correspondence like this.
You either have to read all of them or you need some kind of, some kind of protocol. Because, you know, I still don't know whether the letter from Market Basket exists. I haven't read it. I haven't, I got a, it was unclear from that meeting whether some.
What meeting are, what meeting are you talking about, Mike? I'm not, I'm, I honestly don't know which meeting you're talking about.
I think it's when 37 agricultural zone members zoomed in and I asked the question, did you get a letter from Market Basket?
Okay, it was from one of the public hearings.
Yeah, I, I can go back, it was before you were on the board and I can go back and I believe I had forwarded it to the board, but it was again, the first week or so that I was starting, so I don't remember. You know, let's try to limit correspondence, I guess, to communications, to things that we get up until that Friday before. I'll try to send them anything, anything out to you with the board. And, you know, we can kind of paraphrase them, acknowledge them, ask board members to make sure that they've seen them. And if there needs to be any, people feel like they need to be read, we can, or read parts of them or something like that. We made at times with hearings on applications, get letters, you know, on a Tuesday or Wednesday before a meeting, however. So that's, that is important for public comment when we have public hearings on applications. But we'll do the best to share, share things as we can electronically and at meetings in person. So you have that information.
I was just wondering, would it be helpful to have a short, like disclaimer on the website that says if you'd like your feedback to be included in a meeting, it should be received by, or that is too much for the website to like overload?
I think that's sort of an unfair expectation for sometimes people that may not have a chance as a butters, you know, to come in and look at plans till the day before the meeting and they might just not be able to attend the meeting and send a letter. So I'd want to encourage participation and try to do the best we can to share information and probably summarizing, you know, here's a letter or some key points, you know, especially on applications for or against or whatever, you know. I just got one today about an application for April 15th. It's a couple of pages, are fairly lengthy, so you'll, you'll get that next Friday.
Right. My suggestion would be if it's about a hearing that's taking place that day and then the butter can't show up, I think that's an appropriate time that you read any and all correspondence. But when it's pertaining to the letter that was read today and put on the screen, whereas others were not and the people watching the Zoom meetings have no clue what was said, it, it kind of, for someone just from the outside, it might look like someone's cherry picking letters to put out there and I would just caution the board.
Well, I can assure folks that are watching at home that we're not cherry picking correspondence here. We're trying to figure out the best way to, to give, give voice to people who are communicating with us. So this is a challenge, I think, that we deal with all the time on the planning board, that it's, it's hard to know how to deal with these correspondence that come in written, how we get them to the board, how we distribute them to the board. So, and these are comments to the board about issues that we're dealing with in the public meeting. So any other suggestions from other, other board members on how best to deal with correspondence?
I don't have any better idea. I, I agree with June. I, I think it's great that, you know, by the Friday before, well, the planning board will get that information. I, I guess I just struggle with if those, if Grace was here tonight, she would be speaking, you know, along the same lines as her letter. And, and so everybody would hear that, would hear what she wanted to say. So I think if, and, you know, if they're three pages long, I don't know, so be it. But those voices should be heard as complete as we can. I, I get that it's cumbersome, but I think it's important for everybody to hear, not just the planning board, but the public.
I agree. I think in the context of tonight's letter, it was, we, it was read into the, it was read to the board immediately following our request for public comment and anyone who was in attendance that have equally, you know, commented during that period of time. I, I do think that it's, it is important that all correspondence should be addressed by the board. My recollection of, of the hearing was that if we received correspondence, they were all treated the same in the context of, of the hearing. And I think that, you know, if we receive, you know, numerous correspondence in the context of a specific hearing, we should consider them as, as we would comments received in person at that time. So, you know, I do think, I don't, to my recollection, I don't think we have neglected any letters that have been submitted. But I could be wrong, so.
I just don't remember hearing the letter, the correspondence from Market Basket that night during a hearing on that subject. It wasn't read. We, we don't know whether the, the letter correspondence actually exists still. And you would think one of the biggest property taxpayers in Plymouth, that, you know, their voice would be heard at a hearing on that topic that they wrote in about. And it wasn't voiced, no one knew about it. And I'm just curious why.
I mean, I, yeah, so I think that that's an issue that we, you know, we don't, we can go back over the minutes. We can go back over the video feed. I do want to just make sure that you can be a property owner in Plymouth, you can be, anyone can speak at these meetings. It doesn't matter how much property you own. Everybody has a voice here. That's, that's very important to note. That's our job is to facilitate conversations between this board and the public and between the applicants and the butters. Our job is to, is to, to give a platform for voices, so. So, yeah, John?
I would just want to clarify one thing. I want to agree with Mary Ann and Phil. I also would like to say, sometimes at these meetings, like when we had a large group, group speaking about zoning changes, for example, we put a limit on the speaker's time. And whatever that limit is should also be the same for reading a letter. So if we get a five-page letter, there might not be enough time to read the whole thing. And in fairness to everyone, they should have the same amount of time. And however that gets handled, I don't know.
I think it's a good suggestion.
Yep.
Steve?
I found the letter for Mike. So it was, it was sent to the planning board as part of a packet on the 15th of January for the hearing, which I think was the 21st, if my email's correct, Mike. And it was included, it included the Verizon engineering letter as well. And I know, I don't remember if that's the meeting that Mike spoke with Kevin French or if that's the meeting that Will was there representing Horizon. But both of those letters were referred to, we can go back and check that tape, but both of those letters were referred to. They were not read into the record, like you're saying, but they were provided to the planning board well ahead and they were referred to in the discussion. But those are the dates, so it was mid-January.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, so it sounds like we're going to do our best to, to read. I guess, do we want to read all correspondence or just the ones that come in past our Friday deadline? I mean, this is something, this is a work in progress. This is, you know, this is our job. So I don't know if we necessarily have to say this is how we're doing it, but let's just make sure that this is an ongoing discussion, that when we have communications received by the board, things that we haven't received in our packet, we discuss in which way we're going to be presenting them. All right, we good to move on?
Yep, so there's, there's a certain, after a certain time, the letters that were received will be read during the planning board meeting. Is that how I understand it?
I think so. I mean, we receive a lot of correspondence. Yeah, I.
Not all.
But we're not, we're not.
Well, I guess not. Sorry, go ahead, Phil.
Well, I was going to say, it's not all, not every correspondence that we receive warrants the full attention of the board. A lot of things are specific to the chair. And I don't think that we need to read each individual correspondence. But I think when someone submits a letter in a time, if, if the letter is received in timely fashion, by, you know, by the end of day Friday before, or, well, we should, I guess we should figure out whatever that timeline is. But, you know, if we have the ability to read a letter into the record that was received half an hour before the meeting, we should make every effort to do so. But I think that it's hard to guarantee that each correspondence, if, if it's received during the meeting while we're meeting, we shouldn't feel obligated to do that. You know, people have the opportunity to participate in the meeting and especially with meetings being virtual, anyone is, is welcome to speak during the comment period.
I would caution the board that if we're going to choose and pick which letters we want to read and which ones we don't, I would caution them. It's, if someone sends in a letter, it can still be put like it does for many years. You put it in front of the, the table. This was received late, it's in front of you. You can peruse it while you're sitting there. Or we read all of it, but I'm not sure we can pick and choose the way we did today.
I'm offended by.
Hang on, hang on a sec. There was no, there was, I'm just going to interrupt for a second here. Hang on, Phil, there was no picking and choosing, Mike. There was one letter, there was no picking and choosing. So let's, let's be careful about our language here. I think, I think we need to move on unless anyone has any last comments. I think we need to be making sure we're giving, I don't think there is a black and white version for us to say, yes, we read everything, no, we only read this. I think we have to take it on a, on a meeting by meeting basis on, based on the correspondence we receive because it does vary so widely. So, sorry, Phil.
I was echoing the same sentiment. So please go ahead.
Sorry, Mike, do you have anything else to add?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, are we good to move on? All right. We are now on to new business. First up, master plan review and discussion. Was everyone able to complete all their homework and read the master plan?
I believe peruse would be the operative word there.
I definitely skimmed the recommendations, I'll, I'll admit to that, but. All right, so anything that jumps out as things of the master plan? I think this is where we're going with this, June, is we were trying to identify any, you know, anything, any recommendations, any ideas that we see in the master plan that are applying to our work with zoning, cycle and regs, things like that.
Yeah, I can, if you don't mind me stepping in.
No, please, go ahead.
Well, we just wanted the board members to, you know, annually at least, to take a look at the master plan and think about, as Rebecca said, how the items in there, both the, kind of the front matter that talks about the community and then the implementation section, the last sort of half of it, where they, the tables with kind of guidelines of some, some lists of things to do. And especially the timeframe to me is also really important. I know when you do a master plan like this, you say short, medium, long-term timeframe. And then things change, so you can't obviously always keep online with those things. And sometimes the changes can be, you know, new opportunities that come around to, that, that move things up in a good way. So, and I'll maybe talk about that in a little bit towards the end. But, you know, I've been, I would say that, you know, I'm going through this and on somewhat of a weekly basis as things have come around. And I, you know, I see some areas where I'd want more clarity at times from the board, but, you know, or shifting priorities. But I guess, is there any input that in general that board members have to help, help guide our work, help guide my work when working with Jules? And from a staff sort of side? Because we have other things that we do too. So I just also want to make sure that there's this sense of like what, you know, while we certainly are here to serve the planning board, whilst the zoning board, doing lots of other things too and getting a lot of public questions, comments, you know, things from, as people are working on different applications for development too. So there's a lot every week to sort of manage as we juggle things around.
June, could you answer, uh, so, as a newbie here, it looks like, um, in two thousand and eight, a master plan was done, and then in two thousand and fifteen, you started this process again uh, for the current master plan. So, based on that schedule, does that mean in twenty twenty-two, the town is due to start a master plan again? Or is there no formal schedule?
So, I would say, um, and in, this is something I'm kind of chuckling, because over the years, I've, there's, it's generally stated, like, every five to ten years, a town should redo its master plan, and that has kind of, um, been repeated over and over. It's actually not in the statutes, uh, and I think a better guideline is when the town feels that the current master plan isn't quite doing its service anymore, then it's time to do one, a new one, so this one could be good for twelve years, or it could be good for eight years, or, or we could start on it next year again. So that's why it's important to review it from time to time and think about, you know, you can also amend parts of it if needed, if we see a lot of changes, um, one way or another. So I did, there's no firm schedule that, you know, again, five to ten years is a general guideline, but it should be done when, when the town feels like it needs to be done, I think, as much as anything.
Actually, June, can I ask for some clarification on some of our lines? There was somewhere in the master plan, I actually probably have a page number on here somewhere, um, in my notes, but, um, where it was called that it might be beneficial to have a downtown master plan in addition to the overall master plan. Is that something we're considering, or? No, at this point?
Um. You know, it's, it, you know, a lot of communities might do a more focused neighborhood plans, including downtown, you know, that, in Plymouth, that's probably our an area that could use some more, you know, specificity to it, uh, at the same time, I think under kind of the economic development parts being, that's kind of a core economic center for our community, as well as Tenny Mountain Highway, I would want, I would think that a better approach would be looking at a broader sort of economic development plan. And then maybe more specific specifics or an updated housing plan. And thinking about how housing around our downtown and the neighborhoods around, around there, both single-family and multifamily residential, as well as, and again, I'll mention this later on, but we've got some interest potentially about expanding housing in our downtown area to have more walkable areas, and this is for non-student housing, I should say. That there, you know, things change in our, in our communities in a broad sense, and people have different needs, uh, different wants over time, so we're starting to see a little bit of a swing to seeing adults wanting to be more close to the downtown and perhaps not in a, in a single-family home, they might want something that's more apartment sort of centered. So again, a housing need study can look at that a little bit more, kind of the market, and, you know, the housing market right now is a little crazy, in the last year, everybody probably has heard that, but.
If I can add a comment to, um, to kind of follow up on what Mark had brought up. The timeline, um, it, it, in my experience, it does take a couple of years to put together a good master plan, and I think, you know, you noted that this process was started in twenty fifteen. But it didn't really, it wasn't adopted until twenty eighteen, and I think the last one was two thousand and eight, so, you know, that puts us on the, you know, if, if we follow with a ten-year schedule, you know, we might want to start thinking about another, you know, starting to do some surveys in twenty twenty-five, maybe. But, you know, only if it's needed, you know, if we find that, you know, we think that the current master plan is serving us, you know, as June suggested, I'm not sure we need to revisit. You know, specifically in twenty twenty-five.
Mike.
So I would agree with what Joe, um, June said and what Phil said, that, um, there's a requirement that every ten years you review your master plan to see whether you want to make changes or not, it doesn't mean you have to make changes, you could wait thirty years if you feel there's no need, but there's no nothing that says you have to make changes, so I agree with both of them.
Thanks. Steve?
I guess, in just looking back at the plan in anticipation of tonight, and looking at the, the last section, at the implementation actions, I specifically focused on the land use actions, and it was the reminder for me, because I think at the public hearings at the beginning of the year, you know, we, we got bogged down talking about one district that may or may not need attention. But the master plan talks about kind of looking at all the districts, and talks about some of also what June's been bringing to our attention, just dealing with, uh, some of the housekeeping, some of the less interesting but equally important things, so I would like to support June with that. But I just wanted to read the goal at the beginning of that section on page forty-six, because I, it's simple, I don't know who wrote it, it was not me. It says, land use goal, maintain the uniqueness and build upon the strengths of each area of Plymouth. And so I don't know what will get accomplished when we talk about zoning, but I think having a diversity of opinions, even in this small meeting, you know, thinking about that, people who can inform us what that means, I think that would be helpful.
One, one thing I, I thought was really interesting thing with, you know, how does implement into zone, zoning, was on page twenty-three, I guess it is, we are talking about the ag zone again, and the plan described how currently density is limited by slopes and wetlands and other natural features, and there is no actual teeth in there to enforce that. And that's what a lot of, I think, the work that went into this, um, previous, um, zoning that we were working on was trying to remedy, to actually not have it just at the whim of our natural features and hoping we're not going to o- overly densely developed and actually make it enforceable.
If I can speak to that, the town that I used to live in had language in our, um, minimum lot size requirements that discussed minimum acreage exclusive of steep slopes and wetlands. So, you know, with the idea that, um, you know, you want to have a sufficient amount of land on a lot that is suitable for building. And, and, uh, you know, it, it became contentious, um, you know, it would, and, you know, in the context of a, of a fairly large subdivision, you know, you might have thirty acres, that's, you know, you could put into fifteen, two-acre lots, but if you immediately remove out all the, the steep slopes and wetlands, then you might be left with twenty acres. And, and, you know, in a cluster situation, that might mean you can put in twenty, twenty lots regardless, you know, and, and you might cluster them on the good portion and leave some of the, you know, I kind of like how it worked out in reality, because it allowed you to protect some of the steep and wet areas in, in open space and allowed smaller lots on a corner of the lot that might have been more suitable for development, so that can work really well. But I do, I, I noted that as well. And the other thing that I was kind of impressed when I read was that, uh, seventy-seven percent of the land in Plymouth is currently in current use. Which doesn't prohibit development, but means that, you know, if, if you take it out of currently use, you pay a land use change tax, which is ten percent of the assessed value of the land. So it's, it's not a huge impediment, but it, you know, it's something that someone has to think about if they're going to develop or subdivide land that's in current use.
Other thoughts on the, the master plan?
I had a question that is a little bit aside from some of the stuff we're talking about right now. Um, one of the things that was mentioned in the plan were the corridors that connect some of our natural areas around town. And I wonder, I mean, is, and they were described as important for, you know, wildlife to travel, and, um, presumably they could be important for other reasons as well. Looking forward and talking about like ecotourism and stuff like that, uh, which I know is on, people are talking about. So we have these corridors that were described, and I can pull up a page number if you want to have it somewhere. Why, I can. Why, anyway, I, I have them somewhere in my notes, but, um, is there any, are those currently, um, not developable, or are they in areas that are just hard to develop, um, is there any protection for those to maintain them as corridors? Uh, because they were, they were called out, um, as significant at some point. And I was just wondering, like, how do those actually play in, in practical development?
Do you want me to take a stab at that, Rebecca? So I think you're talking about on page thirty-one, the others, like, four or five kind of key areas. Well, there's recreation corridors I'm looking at, I guess, I mean, there may have been other sort of wildlife, um, ones, but in general, you know, when you see that in a plan, it's sort of conceptual, that's saying, hey, here's, here's some potential areas for either wildlife to move through, or people to move through and recreate. It doesn't mean it's open for recreation, um, because it is, with this too, I believe, is conserved lands, which is usually, um, you know, town-owned land or lands with conservation easements or something, so, you know, each parcel by parcel may have different objectives to it, that landowners may be wanting to do different things, so. When I see this, I think it's, it's a nice concept, but it doesn't mean that, um, there's a trail there, or, you know, that we are, the idea behind it, given this is a larger land use plan, is to think about, would it be an initiative of the community to try to do something to more permanently keep those areas for some kind of corridor movement, like for people or animals. I don't think the towns, I think we've got a lot of other things to work on. You know, and the fact that a lot of that land is in current use is a good thing, because it's being maintained in most cases now as forested lands. You know, given that, where, where it is, more upland areas, so, um, you know, I think that's, that's that's a good mechanism that the state of New Hampshire has used since the seventies to kind of protect, uh, larger parcels of land and try to keep it in private ownership and let people, you know, manage it in a way that's, that's good forestry too, so I think we're okay with it, it just doesn't mean, you know, there might not be wide recreation corridors through there, and it might not be appropriate to have them either, so.
Thank you.
Steve?
Um, just to build on John's question, so when that came up, we were getting help with, from North Country Council on that part of the master plan. And I think Greg DeSanto prepared that map for us, he was the staff planner at the time. And it's, as June said, it's like, kind of intentionally vague. So, recognizing that not everything has to happen through zoning, as much fun as zoning is, and we're all having tonight. That could be out there just to inspire landowners who want to do something, or the Conservation Commission and other partners in town who might want to look for a recreation or conservation opportunities in those areas. So it's, it's just kind of out there to inform these discussions, but not limit them.
June, is there more feedback that you're looking for with this, anything else that would be helpful for you? Or anything that's standing out to you when you look at this, look at the master plan?
I think, um, just knowing now that board members have been looking at it helps, uh, you know, again, it's not, it's not, it is something you peruse, you don't necessarily read cover to cover, as Mary Ann said. And I just think it's important to keep coming back to it, to get some direction. And I'm going to try to use it, um, you know, in my ti- in my work at times to say, I might decide or try to help, help the community decide, I should say, you know, that let's work on, let's focus on this and not this now, because it's supported by the master plan. There may be other times, like I said, when other things pop up, and we can say, well, while this is a lower priority, it's, it's become a higher priority, and let's move ahead now. So it's a balance, um, but I, I just think it's important to kind of visit it periodically and understand how, um, the, I think one of the biggest challenges is probably taking the master plan and then using it to support the land use regulations that we have, which includes zoning, subdivision, and site plan review. And all of those documents are pretty outdated, and, um, and we can argue about how and when, but I can tell you from where we sit on a weekly basis in the town hall, there's definitely some areas where I want to try to strengthen update, um, and do some things better to, to meet the goals of the master plan, make things easier to, to have more clarity as much as anything. And, and, um, just be able to kind of provide better information for the board here when they're doing work, looking at applications, understanding the completeness, what the components are, what the standards are. I had a conversation yesterday and today with our highway manager, who's, you know, really concerned about our road regulations, our road standards, and we haven't had, um, I don't, well, I shouldn't say that, I haven't, I haven't been back long enough, but and there isn't a lot of new subdivisions recently, but there's a few, and one notable one that is getting built out on, but it's been, you know, a good fifteen years, almost eighteen years since the construction started on it. You know, and, and some property owners want the town to take it over, that kind of thing, and what, understanding what our responsibilities of the board, when you approve something, and then the administration to to handle that approval is really key. You know, when we don't have surety and financial means to go back to the owner of the road, to get them to put in guardrails and fix up drainage systems that maybe haven't held up well over fifteen years, or, um, you know, one thing or another, if the town just accepts the road, we're accepting hundreds of thousands of dollars of work that needs to be done. And that's something we really need, you know, this, this town needs, needs help on the infrastructure side, and so Joe, uh, from Highway, Highway really wants us to take a good look at our, at our road standards in particular, and bring those up to date, and or review them and make sure that, you know, they are reading current DOT specifications and guidelines, things like that. That's a, that's a really big one.
June, doesn't UNH have road standards available to towns as well? I think, if I recall, they had some good resources for towns that had really good standards for roads.
Yeah, there's lots of examples out there, and, you know, it's a matter of just me spending a few hours kind of gathering that and probably bringing it in, you know, but it's part of our subdivision regulation, so. But I think before we see, because the housing market's pretty strong right now, and there's and there's, there's not much for sale anywhere in New Hampshire. Um, I think we're going to start to see some pressure to, you know, build new areas out, uh, so we might want to, that's what I'm saying, also the priorities, like when the housing market's kind of slow and the economy isn't doing as well, you know, but we know that there's this big push for more housing, so how do we want to make sure that if we had a large parcel that was going to get subdivided into, you know, with a new, short cul-de-sac and five new lots or ten lots, how do we make sure that road is well-built and is going to hold up and make sure that, you know, five, ten years out, if the town takes it over, it's in good shape. So we're, the town isn't, you know, and it will hold up for another twenty-five years or so.
That's, that's a great place for, uh, us to, uh, remember to charge design fees and, or for, you know, collect, uh, escrow accounts on subdivisions, so that we can do engineering review on, on town roads.
Right, and keep, and keep the money available, even if it's fifteen years later, making sure that developer, we have the means. You know, because the other part is, if we're going to take over a road, and we had the means to be able to go in and hire somebody to do the finish up the work that wasn't been done, then, um, and that's some record-keeping on the town, you know, town and staff side that we need to work on too.
If I recall correctly, um, adoption of a town road can happen by petition. So, if, 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 so what I remember is that several, um, residents of subdivisions in the town I used to live in got together, and they all petitioned together and to put all of their roads on the ballot for adoption at town meeting, and, um, you know, if, if the, if the town meeting votes to accept the roads, um, you take them in whatever condition they're in. Because it's, it's done by the legislative body, so there can be financial impact of that, and if there's enough, you know, if there's enough, with a small-town meeting, it wouldn't take many, many residents of a couple subdivisions to have that influence, um, and, and our town meetings are lightly, lightly attended in reality. And I'm not saying we should be worried about this, but like, in, in my mind, you know, like, people that live on private roads are paying full-boat taxes, but they're not getting any of the maintenance that, you know, those of us that live on public roads are getting, so they're, they're paying for private plowing and sanding on top of their property taxes, whereas, you know, the rest of the street, the town's plowing is ending for us, so, you know, there's, there's something to be said for adopting, adopting private roads, you know, as long as they're built to our, you know, adequate standard.
So, you raise a really good point, so actually, I believe it's on the warrant for this town meeting, there is a petitioned article about Martin's Estates Road. Because, yeah, a group of people got together and put that out there. And trying to do some research on that, I also found in the records, uh, where the town actually has a road acceptance policy that I can't remember what year, maybe late nineties, early two thousands, at the town, at town meeting, voted to give the board of, the select board, the authority to accept roads. And then the select board adopted a road acceptance policy, which I'll ma- I've made a note, I will send it to you, and basically, it's a, it's a process where, if somebody wants a road to be accepted, they're supposed to go to the select board and make that request, and then we work through a process similarly like we do for construction inspection, uh, we'd ask our town engineer to go out and review the road, um, being, when that cost being paid by the owner of the road. They develop sort of a, a list of deficiencies, uh, or what, what hasn't worked, or what was never finished in accordance with an approved plan. Um, and then they would have to bring those standards up, bring the road up to standard and meet the, meet the. And then they would have to bring those standards up, bring the road up to standard and meet the, meet the, the requirements that the engineer would say. And then, then there would be a formal acceptance. And they also have to create a deed, because to do that, and then the owner of the road is responsible for paying for the legal fees to write up that deed, file it, that kind of thing, because there's costs. So we do have a policy and I will send that to you. So.
Ask a question about that policy, and you don't have to answer tonight, but it's something that you want to look into is, does the legislative body cede their ability to approve the adoption of a road by granting that policy to the selectman?
That's a question that I think we'd have to ask the town attorney.
Okay.
Rebecca.
Mike?
So I, I know that the roads that you're both talking about, and I believe, 18 years ago was the subdivision roughly that was approved, that is still privately maintained. And then the one that was just prior to me getting on the planning board approximately 14 years ago with, the Gowan subdivision, which that road was built to town specs initially when the lots were sold. What was the difference from 18 years ago to 14 years ago? That, I forget the name of the road now, but that that road wasn't built to town spec or wasn't allowed, wasn't forced to, or, how did that happen? The, the difference between the two? Is it just because it was two different developers or how did that work?
Different planning boards approved it. I mean, you can have a planning board approve something that's not up to spec. And if they build it to the spec that was approved, it's done. I mean, we, we have a lot of responsibility to make sure that, that, you know, if somebody proposes a road, that it meets the spec that we have in the standard, but we can approve something that doesn't meet it.
So Rebecca, I might add to what Phil said. Is it that we have a town engineer, that's reviewing all the subdivisions where maybe we didn't have a town engineer in place, 18, 19 years ago, when that development started?
I guess what I think about is more just, oh, what, sorry, June, one second, just making sure that, the next one that comes along, we're doing, we're doing correctly and we're doing well. So I think, you know, we don't necessarily, I mean, that, that's the only thing I can really think of as far as moving forward.
I know on Marjorie Lane, that was very interesting subdivision, the way that they had the access roads coming off the main road and not the interior roads. And, so we, the planning board had to make a lot of adjustments in order for that road to be taken over. Maybe it's not taken over by the town. I'm trying to remember now, but anyway, it seems like everything has been going extremely well the last, 14 years since Marjorie, not Marjorie Lane, the Gowan subdivision. Everything's been done really well since then, and I applaud, the town, the way that they've handled all the new subdivisions. So.
June?
I was just going to suggest, you know, maybe off and another, Mike, you and I can have a phone call and I can do some digging in the records. Because I'm not quite sure which roads you're talking about. So, I'd like to keep this more general, not to get too in the weeds about one, one road or another. But maybe we should have a discussion, to look at the road standards in the context of the subdivision regulations at another, another work session. I would think that would be.
Yeah. I would be willing to do that with Joe, yourself and whoever else. And I think that would be a real worthwhile conversation.
All right. So we move on to zoning and zoning ordinances?
One more, I'm full of questions tonight, sorry. I, I was curious about the envisioned character of the, Tenny, like commercial area. And I, I ask about this because, on the one hand, it's described that to differentiate it from, from Main Street, right? It's going to be less pedestrian oriented. I assume more kind of strip oriented and it's going to have that different character and it's going to be more accessed by automobiles. And then like just a few lines later, I see a description how it should be, safe for pedestrians, which often involves traffic calming and other things, which might be a very different form of development than the kind of automobile art oriented, development that we also see being called for. And I, I understand it's probably a way of balancing these things successfully. But this, the kind of, it just like, it kept going around in my mind. So I figured I'd ask a question about it to, I don't know if there's an answer to it, but just to, at least let you know, it's something kind of that I'm curious about.
This is something we talk, we've talked a lot about as new development has gone in and Tenny Mountain Highway, and we're often, asking developers to put in sidewalks when there's no sidewalk down the main Tenny Mountain corridor, but, trying to allow for all modes of transportation along Tenny Mountain Highway, bicycles, foot, car, because people are accessing it already in that way. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but it's something that, that we've been thinking about as we see, as we see new development on Tenny Mountain Highway.
One thing if I can add Rebecca is Steve Whitman brought up, a wealth of information when we were developing, across from Hatch, Hatch Plaza, the development. And because of the nature of the businesses and McDonald's and, and the new hotel, Steve really perceived the need for sidewalks and pushed for that. And, and we got that. And, it, it fits well in that development. And also, the location of it and the nature of the businesses allows for a sidewalk at that intersection as well between the Hatch Plaza and, the McDonald's and the bank. And so I think it depends, not just the entire road, but what businesses and how close to, town walk, in-town walking distance, I guess.
I was just going to say also, I mean, I appreciate like individual businesses putting sidewalks in, which is helpful. I can also say as someone who has on occasion decided to walk Tenny Mountain, and actually tried to cross the road on foot. It's treacherous. And this is why, why I ask about like traffic calming or crosswalks or something. I mean, it's a treacherous ordeal to cross that road at times, certain times of the day.
And I've noticed that there's an increase in pedestrian traffic along Tenny Mountain and, bicycles, and even push carts. People, with their belongings pushing push carts up, the road and it's, there are certain sections where that's just really not a good idea for their health. So I think that's something that we ought to be keeping in mind if we're going to approve anything that's going on in Tenny Mountain Corridor. That there's starting to be more and more people, including pedestrian traffic from Hatch Plaza up to Route Three, up to Main Street.
June?
I just want to, I think one thing, I'm all for pedestrian access, pedestrian safety. If we put in sidewalks everywhere, then we have to consider who's going to maintain them, especially in the winter and the cost of that. So I think it's a balance. That's something we have to think about both short term and long term. I've talked to Joe about this a bit. Some states, you know, do have requirements like in residential areas where if you, you know, the sidewalk section in front of your house, you have to maintain, you have to get clear the snow of, and they give you, I don't know, 12 hours or five, six hours or whatever sort of timeline. In Boston, you have to clear the sidewalk in front of your house. New Hampshire, I think goes back to the 1800s or something, has a statute that says, we do not do that here. It's up to the town to, maintain the sidewalks. So that's at our expense. So just keep that in mind too. And it's a long way from the highway garage, to Tenny Mountain Highway and then down Tenny Mountain Highway. So, not to say we can't do it, it's just there's an added piece for the cost of those things. So something to consider.
Not to mention the challenge of DOT. Go ahead, Steve.
I, I appreciate John's question. And I think when we talked, it's in the master plan, but when we talked about Tenny Mountain Highway and the fact that it has good road access, it has water, it has sewer, there is additional land for development and it could be denser. I believe it could be the, one of the densest locations with some of the tallest buildings in that area. And now we have some residential and there seems to be increasing interest in residential. I think John's right. Over time, if that becomes more of a mixed use area, it needs that kind of infrastructure. And maybe we need to find new ways, because I hear June saying as well, with some off corridor places or other ways of paying for plowing, but, if we really want to focus development there, make opportunity, then we need to address non-automobile transportation options.
Great conversation. I don't want to stifle it or stop it, but, and we can certainly adjust our agenda accordingly. We're about an hour into our meeting tonight. But we were going to move on to zoning and zoning ordinances, and June was going to give kind of an overview on that. Are we good to move on from the master plan? I mean, we're never, we never move on from the master plan, but for this evening, are we good to move on to talk about zoning in a broad sense? Awesome. Go ahead, June.
All right. So I am looking at the agenda here and kind of debated putting together, you know, sort of a broad conversation about zoning and zoning ordinances. But I think would be better to focus on part C of the agenda with the Plymouth zoning ordinance more in particular. And if I need to go back to kind of explain more things about zoning to board members, I'm happy to do that. I did go back to some of my classroom PowerPoint slides and greatly shortened them. So, but in this format too, I think it would be, I've got some slides to kind of share, specifically about Plymouth zoning ordinance and some of the, the, issues that I have seen for years that really I think are the priority areas for the community to address. So that's one thing I wanted to talk about tonight. While I fully respect the work that's gone in, leading up to the proposed amendments this year that then have been, you know, we decided not to go forward with. I don't want to lose sight of that. However, from a staff point of view, there's a lot, other things that aren't working so well and haven't for years in the ordinance and in some ways have gotten worse. It's very typical of zoning to get, you know, zoning ordinances to sort of get a band-aided approach. You've tried to fix one thing or, address some new type of issue in the community and you don't, you miss that there's a conflict in another part of the ordinance. There's can be, you know, things added and subtracted that make it kind of messy. And it's not just Plymouth. It happens. There's another community I've seen that the ordinance is in really rough shape, having, having looked at a lot of different town, town regulations and ordinances and especially in New Hampshire. So I don't mean, I'm not, I want to try to find ways to help get this to be worked better for everybody and hopefully sort of streamline things. I do think it's a piece of our economic development because when people are looking to, the community and they are trying to determine what they can do where and how to do it, it's can be a confusing mess. So then they call, and ask questions. And that's, you know, that's our job to answer the questions, but, there's been a few just in the last couple of weeks that have been, have been, age old problems in some cases and newer ones in some others. So, I did, with the meeting announcement, give you, I think, a homework assignment of about two and a half minute YouTube video that I've given to students in the past. I think it's so, such a good short summary, done by the city of Phoenix. Not to say that we're going to start zoning like Phoenix does, but did, if anybody had a chance to look at it, had questions, hopefully it was helpful, real basic view of what zoning is.
I thought it was really helpful. I, I watched it in the several moments I had before this meeting. And so if you haven't watched it, I would, I would definitely encourage checking it out.
So let me go over a couple, just a couple, hold on. Here we go. Okay. This is sort of my summary, my comments about Plymouth with a little bit of zoning, in a broad sense and planning in a broad sense. This is a slide I used to use in my classes, you know, that really kind of gets to why we talk about master plans, what it is. Now they're the sort of comprehensive view, but without a master plan, you can't have the regulations of zoning subdivision and site plan. Those are required. You have to have the master plan to have those. And the point, important point about that is that everything needs to kind of relate back to the land use and the goals of the community, that are stated in the plan. So, just sometimes good to remember that, that there is a relationship between these different things, these different elements that we all use. I mean, lately, I think the planning board's been more focused within site plan review. And, you know, that, that, because that's where sometimes the development happens and we have pretty strict, requirements for when site plan review comes around. So that was just a overview of that. Again, I go back to the state statute, which kind of follows from federal legislations from the 1920s about why we have zoning and how it's legal, you know, and, ultimately, if you just remember protecting public health, safety and welfare is a really important kind of part of the sort of foundation of zoning. If you think back to what, city life was like in the late 1800s, it wasn't, wasn't so nice. So there was really, you get these statements that are coming from the statute that are really the purpose of zoning that are in every zoning ordinance or should be. And that just the general kind of first page of your zoning ordinance to sort of say, hey, we have zoning because, this is what it does. All right. They're kind of funny statements in a way. They're kind of broad in a way, but, and they have been adopted and changed or amended, I should say, with some recent, fairly recent additions. The last one of trying to encourage renewable energy systems was something that New Hampshire put in a number of years, not too far, too long ago. And then New Hampshire does kind of highlight natural resources, agricultural lands and buildings, that kind of thing too. But in general, those are the big purpose of why we have zoning and it's been long tested through many, many court cases. And it still gets upheld. So there's really two parts to any zoning. There is the zoning ordinance overall. It should have a map and the text. The map so shows spatially, where things, where the different zones are. But zoning is more than just zones. And, so the text, the actual, what we kind of call the ordinance on a regular basis, the thing you can hold in your hand or look at a PDF file, really is the text of it. And again, it has a purpose and intent, has to have a big section about definitions. It describes the districts and basically, you know, this is where you separate typically, you're separating uses residential, commercial, industrial, historic, historically, those have been sort of the separations agricultural, which is certainly something in Plymouth here. And within each of those districts or zones, you list out what's permitted, what's allowed by special exception, size, area requirements, that sort of thing, maybe in that area too. General provisions is usually a section that it's in general, applies pretty much to every zone. It may have something to do with kind of how things operate. Typically, this is not a comprehensive, you know, definitive list. There's a lot of variations with every zoning, but in general, general, in general, general provisions can include like accessory uses and structures, maybe height and area requirements. Sometimes they're put in there instead of in the zone. A lot of it, you definitely want something about non-conformity. Because every community will have lots, uses and structures that are illegal because they're pre-existing and, and, and they, they need to be allowed to continue, but they have to have some specifications about how they can expand. And then again, general provisions and special provisions, sometimes they get a little bit, these things can be interchangeable or found in different sections, but usually it's about signs, parking, sometimes about manufactured housing. Might be about cell towers, overlay zones, like especially like our floodplain development sections. Those are usually kinds of, special items that, that show up there. And then there's always a section on an administration and enforcement, which, there's, in my opinion, if you're not doing good administration of the zoning and consistent administration of your zoning, and if you're not enforcing it, then, it's kind of like, what's the point? So again, the text has, this is where we talk about really what you're trying to do is regulate, again, it's about crowding. What the overall purpose of each zone is, you're looking at uses and intensity of uses. What kind of density do you have? What kind of height requirements? Those sorts of things. Obviously you've got different, different densities and intensity of land use when it's a farm versus downtown Chicago, but you get the idea. So this is where I just really wanted to kind of focus in tonight is talking about some of the administration. When there's, you know, people are people, no, you know, two people can read the same part of a zoning ordinance, interpret it differently. We can't always do everything exactly right. But we try to have clarity in ordinances to, to give consistency and interpretation. Definitions can be, when they're missing, sometimes we may think we know, we may think we all have a common understanding of what a, hotel is, but there's a lot of variations that somebody could interpret, especially now with short-term rentals. What's a hotel versus a short-term rental of somebody's home, like an Airbnb type of thing? So there's, there's always a need to like, make sure that your definitions are, are working for, for the community's ordinance. Non-conformity, that's a huge one, especially in Plymouth's ordinance has come up. And just the overall general provisions, organize, or how it's organized. And then, you know, are we keeping up to date with newer types of uses in our community? So there's a couple of examples that I have. My, my copy of the zoning ordinance is pretty, you know, getting lots of marks on it, was just on a daily basis when something comes up. And I'm like, oh, this is a kind of an issue or this needs clarity. You know, we have lots of different types of uses listed for different zones. And I go back to definitions at times to sort of determine what they are and discover, hey, that, you know, some of these don't seem like that big a deal. A library is a library. Okay, but some of the others might be a little bit more lacking clarity. And I think one of the, we, we have a definition of a restaurant and we have a definition for drive-through service. But then we list drive-through restaurants as a use. We don't really define what that is. Okay, everybody kind of knows what it is, but it really should be there. One reason why I brought that up is, you know, we have a, a application coming that we saw the preliminary discussion for a couple of weeks ago for a beverage service that is accessed only by car or potentially walk-up service. But it's no, you know, the public is not allowed inside the building. So really it serves as a drive-through restaurant. And I think, you know, I'm not so sure that the town initially intended to have drive-up be a sole use of a property rather than sort of accessory to a restaurant. But we don't have the ability to say that based on the definitions that we have. So I had to determine that, yes, this is a permitted use for the, the Roma Joes I'm talking about that's coming. It's only really a drive-up service and they are giving a parking and you can walk up to it. But again, it's a little bit different structure than a normal restaurant. So that was one I had to interpret. And again, anytime we make interpretations, they are appealable, you know, when somebody could go to the zoning board and say, hey, I think the planner got it wrong. And that's fine. That's the process. I, that can, that can happen anytime. So there's a few definitions here. I would like us to, you know, I need to kind of, I'm giving you the overview, not the solutions, kind of showing you the problems. And I'm just going to tell you that I, these are some areas that I would like us to consider prioritizing for zoning amendments for next year. So some work on definitions and there's other areas too, to kind of update definitions or within certain definitions, make sure that they're, that they're the right ones we want to have.
Non-conform, yeah, go ahead. Just to be clear, you're saying that there's things within the, some of the table of uses that aren't, we're not seeing as definitions.
Correct.
So we're, there's just some lack of continuity. Okay.
Yeah. Non-conformity in section 400 of the zoning ordinance, this came up recently. A couple of different areas where it's, we have this statement that says, so if you have an existing lot, that's only just under a half an acre and it's vacant, can you build on it? That was basically the question. There was another twist to it, but we'll keep it, keep it simple, giving you a quiz here. So somebody calls up and says, hey, I'm looking at this lot, can I, is it buildable? And, you know, we look at this section and say, yeah, as long as you meet these three bullets that if the owner next door owns adjacent vacant land, then they have, basically they were trying to say that, you know, they want that, that vacant lot next door added to somebody's parcel to make it more non-conforming, to add that, to get rid of the non-conformity. So this is an area where the, the zoning ordinance requires one acre and the lot is, we'll call it a half an acre. All right. So we can say, okay, that first bullet didn't apply until I went and looked at the owners next door. And actually, the owner next door does own the neighboring lot, but there's a house on the neighboring lot. It's not vacant land. So they're asking about the actual vacant land. So this is just not well worded and it was kind of funny to say, well, I mean, the nuances of some of my storytelling here, I'm kind of keeping it short. But, you know, and then I went through this too, and we're trying to figure out what the setbacks would be. And I didn't understand this last part because it didn't make any sense to me, like basically saying a side yard of 15 feet on either side, except no side yard shall be less than 10 feet. Well, who gets to decide that? You know, there's no, I think that part in red should be taken out. This is really specific stuff, but this is the kind of stuff that we deal with regularly. And it's can be fairly, I think we can correct a lot of this fairly easily and it will make our life in town hall better. I know this text is a little bit small, but talking about non-conformity, then you go on to the next section and section 405. And it talks about, the title of the section is about non-conforming uses. And then it, the very first part, it says an unlawful building or use of a building. So now we're talking about non-conforming structures, not uses. So in non-conformity, you can have a, a business being run in a residential neighborhood that was there from, you know, 85 years ago and it was pre-existing and it's grandfathered and it's allowed to continue. Even though the current ordinance may not consider that to be a permitted use, but it has what we call grandfathering and is allowed to continue. But that building, a non-conforming building may be a building that sits partly in the setback area. That's a different thing. So your ordinance should really have a section that addresses non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures and non-conforming lots. And we don't do this. And again, this just came up a couple of weeks ago where somebody has a non-conforming, two non-conforming lots next to each other and is looking to do a subdivision. There's plenty of acreage. It's about an issue of frontage. And because we don't have anything that really gave clarity about how to go on this, we made the determination that they could go ahead and do what they're, they're hoping to do. We'll see, we'll see how it works out, but we really need something, it's just completely missing. And I actually told, talked to our town's attorney. He's like, yeah, you got this, you got to fix this. So this is another area and, you know, it just takes, this lack of clarity is where it's really, really difficult. Accessory structures is another fun one to deal with. We have this area or this requirement about yards. So, you know, we say that yards kind of defines what they are. And then we say, no, no structure may occupy any part of a yard, basically that red part. But then another section says, oh, actually you can do that by special exception. So those again are in conflict. So I think what happened, section 409 was added to try to give some flexibility to allow accessory buildings in the, by special exception, not by variance. Because a special exception is a much easier standard to meet. So I assume the intent, but by not taking out that red text in the previous section, you create conflict. So again, if I just read 401.4 and read that last part and say, nope, you can't do it, you need a variance. And then somebody's reading the other section, they're like, no, it says by special exception. And it's like, which is it? So these are the kinds of things that we, we have to kind of, and again, fences is another one. Again, there's a lot of text here, but a fence is a fence is a fence. You can read the definition. Again, repeating what we say about accessory structure, accessory structure, something that's fixed onto the ground. And it includes fences over four feet high are considered a structure. All right. And then we go back to this bit about accessory buildings and uses. They can be in the side, in the, in the setback area by special exception. But then we read this other section about fences and it's like, it is, it is allowed. But yet fences over six feet require a special exception. What about fences that are five feet? You know, one area is saying it needs a variance, another area is saying it doesn't. So that part is conflicting because fences are defined to be accessory structures. You know, if they're over four feet. So, and then it goes back to that same part of like yard regulations, what I mentioned in the previous slide. So I know, I think that what the town was trying to do is find a way to allow fences over four feet or maybe six feet in the setback area. But this, there's just too many conflicts here to be able to address this. So we just, sometimes you just sort of pick one and say, well, sure, we can do that. But if you pick one section for one person and somebody picks it for a different for another and somebody has to get a special exception versus a variance for the next one, that's, that's not fair. That's not good. And last week, in 15 minutes, I got two questions about storage containers. Apparently there's no storage units available anywhere. So storage containers are, I think we're going to see more questions about this. Again, this, sometimes these are newer uses. These are those kind of metal prefabricated boxes that businesses are using a lot. And they can hide them around out back and they have some, some, some benefits to doing that. But, you know, are they taxable or not? I don't know the answer to that. How long are they there for? You know, what's the difference between a storage container and a shed or garage? Is it, is it about being fixed to the ground or not? But you can go buy a prefab shed and just kind of put it on some, some cement blocks. Is that, how different is that really than a storage container? Should we be requiring storage containers to, should we be allowing them in residential areas? Should we be allowing them for only a short period of time? So I went to the ordinance and said, what does it say? And it mentions temporary uses and structures. And it really just mentions that referring it to construction projects, like construction, you know, like the trailers they have on big construction sites for, you know, the workers to use and, and different, you know, for, for a shorter period of time. So that was in there, but it doesn't really address a business having one for some additional storage that may be short-term or, or residential areas. So I think that's, this is something that, because they're easy and they're easy to get and they're pretty contained. We might want to take a look at what we want to do before they get a little bit popping up everywhere. If you start driving around looking for storage containers, can see who can count the most, I guess. So again, yeah, newer, newer uses that are coming up, storage containers, yeah, and storage units, you know, the rental units. We have a number of them in town. They've been around for a while, but we don't have a definition for them. So we had a request about somebody's considering looking into potentially another area for storage units to build them for renting out. And I looked at the ordinance and said, well, it reads like you can fit it under the definition of a commercial service. Because they're selling basically a service in a way, they're selling space. But it's not quite the same as these other types of services. But we don't ever say in the ordinance that they're allowed, but there are many places in town. So how did they come to be there? They're, you know, they've certainly popped up since the ordinance has been written. So again, this is where you have to interpret things to try to figure it out of how to make it work. But I think it'd be a good one to add. Had a question about, can somebody operate a kennel in agricultural zone? And so I went and, we don't have a definition for a kennel, but, you know, animal husbandry seemed like it would fit. So, you know, we said, yeah, we could do that within some limits to it. But that is the kind of thing, if you have a large kennel in a neighborhood that could become pretty disruptive to people. So you might want to have some standards, you know, by special exceptions, a limit on the number of dogs, depending on the area, noise controls, numbers of visitors, you know, or depending on, who knows? You know, those are kinds of things that come up. Recreational vehicle campgrounds, as we know, we've got, been considering one, a lot of communities have some whole sections about campgrounds. And there's some very good reasons, again, public health, safety and welfare, the prime one. What's the water? What's the sewer? And especially a lot of campgrounds are often like access to waterfront. So you have tons of floodplain issues, you know, you, you want to make sure that we don't run into some safety concerns in a flooding situation that those, that any of the vehicles can be pulled out of there. There's usually a lot of restrictions about the numbers of days occupied and storage and off-season. So you don't get people living in them year-round. There's issues about that for, you know, communities and taxation and, and kids in schools and things like that, that, so a lot of communities have, have developed sort of special requirements for recreational vehicle campgrounds are some very good reasons. Again, the drive-through service was one that came up. Can you have that as, as just the primary use of a site? And not as, you know, my, my guess is that it was intended to be an accessory use, but we didn't specify that. So we're going to have that be a primary use. Short-term rentals, you know, again, a lot of communities are wrestling this in the last number of years. And we haven't, I don't know what this community has decided on that in any time, any recent history on it. So I was curious to know if we want to get into regulating, you know, having in our zoning certain spaces where we want to allow short-term rentals. And short-term rentals is like weekends or maybe a week, you know, there's defining it into the Airbnb kind of thing. Do we want, there's, there's some communities have had some real, real problems in single-family residential areas for short-term rentals. So my suggestion is consider whether we want to do something about it or not before, before we have a problem.
So I think I noticed there was something in the list of definitions called a tourist home. Is that also kind of this, but not, or what does that mean?
Well, if you can, if you read the definition, you can tell me if you can understand.
I've, I've read it a few times. I'm still not sure, which is why I asked.
Yeah, that's one I would say we need to better define, better clarify. There's also a rooming house. I mean, these are sort of older, older terms, you know, a rooming house is where you have one kitchen. You know, you might be somebody, I mean, I know somebody that was elderly and, and lived in Manchester and used to rent rooms out to some students that were kind of going to school somewhere around there and she had, I think, had three tenants and they all used her kitchen and refrigerator and that kind of thing. So that's kind of like a rooming house, but she, it was her house. She lived there. But a tourist home is probably, I think, more like a bed and breakfast, probably. Because it's not a motel where sleeping accommodations are provided for transient guests with or without meals. But which the owner is occupying that place. So usually a bed and breakfast, the owner lives there and, you know, rents out rooms. Where a rooming house is more like you rent it for the year or for six months or something. But in each case, the owner lives there, where the short-term rentals are typically somebody doesn't live there. All right. So something to think about. Another consideration is, this is a real puzzle for me in this ordinance, because I've had somebody, two people actually. And we've seen one, somebody had shown sort of a concept plan to me of a different, very different areas of town where they're considering doing some more housing. So we list as permitted uses various types of residential uses, single-family, two-family. And then it specifically mentions residential institutions and rooming houses. But when you get to multiple unit dwellings, it says only of three to six units. All right, we are completely silent about multi-unit buildings over more, more than six units. And again, in the lot sizes, it specifies, here's the lot size if you've got three to six units. So the way zoning works, if it's not listed, it's considered to not be permitted. So, and I know we have some apartment buildings, I know some are more recently kind of maybe been put in, maybe some of them predate zoning, you know, without going into the history of each. But I think this is something that I don't, again, I think this, my guess is that the town probably set the six-unit limit at some point as off-campus rentals were maybe growing to avoid a big kind of dormitory setting, lots and lots of students. But at the same time, it's somewhat hurting the potential for some types of housing in our downtown, perhaps. In a, and also some bigger housing units with multiple, bigger buildings with multiple units in other parts of the community. This could also be implied for condominiums. If somebody wanted to build something, they could only have a condominium building with six units in it as a maximum. So I would just, I'm kind of putting these things out and I'm not looking necessarily, we're not going to come up with all the answers tonight. But this is, some of this will take some real time to work on. And I want to address the things that I feel are probably the most pressing, have the most pressing needs. Most pressing needs to consider these things and get some opinions from you before I, before I go, you know, putting a whole lot of effort into thinking about how we can have more than six units. If this is what you feel like the community wants and it's supported by the master plan, then that's fine. We'll, we'll leave it as is. And one last one here about corner lots. I just wanted to point out, because this has just come up this past week, that we do have a very, this is one area, it's really actually very clear that corner lots, if you have frontage on more than one street, then you have two, two front lot, two, two front yards, basically. And that means you have to have a 30-foot setback generally on both of those areas. So in some cases, that's, could be really difficult for some people. Or restricts how much they can build in some different directions. And again, it's clear, we don't have to change it. I'm just wanting to point it out. Because these are the kinds of things when we see things come up, we kind of deal with on a day-to-day basis. So I will stop sharing.
June, can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Where would something like Fox Park Apartments fall in this?
If somebody came tomorrow to town hall and said, hey, I want to build Fox Park Apartments, I would say you can't have buildings with more than six units in it.
So that was built prior.
I don't know the history of probably, I don't, you know, again, it doesn't, it's there, you know, it's not, it's not in, it's not being non-compliant, but.
But you could have 10 buildings with six units each.
Potentially.
I mean, in theory, right?
Potentially. Yeah, again, it depends on the lot size, because you'd have to have space, you know.
I'm, I'm thinking of the, the ones around the corner. The, the, by behind, if you go into Fox Pond, they're back on the right, there, you know, there are a bunch in there too.
Yeah.
I, I had a question, June, if you, sorry, John, if you were down with your question. Are there issues that the ZBA deals with on a repeated basis that, that would benefit from us clarifying? You know, I think you brought up from us clarifying, you know, that I think you brought up some great examples of you know, structures and side lots and fences and things like that, you know, where, you know, are there issues that are frequent flyers in front of the ZBA that we need to just address with zoning because they're, and that's not anything we need to answer tonight, but just maybe reach out to the members of the ZBA who've been there the longest and.
Yep, we had a meeting scheduled, I think in February, and not enough people were able to attend. So we, the ZBA is meeting next Tuesday, and I hope we will, we have two cases, and I added to the agenda, sort of a general discussion, this kind of discussion. So I'm going to encourage them, you know, over time, I want to hear from them too, like, what's worked and what hasn't, you know, they they definitely have, will have some input too, so. I guess I just, you know, wanted to kind of go over these parts of it again, you know, and sort of share some of the, the work that happens that you guys don't always see and think about where, where we can best invest some time initially to help make things more clear for the whole community, whether it's residential or commercial or whatever. I just think that there would be some, some good, good areas. So I can, you know, start with definitions, but it's, that kind of is almost the last part to do, because you kind of do it once if you go through a search. I really would like to work on the non conformity part. I think that's kind of a must do, in my opinion. And then I'll come back, you know, if that's okay, to kind of focus on that, because we just don't have good clarity about non conformity and also that bit about the accessory structures and fences, I think need some, that general provisions that we have sort of section 400, I think it is of the ordinance, really is, could use some tightening up and rearranging to give clarity. So ideally, that's where I would like to focus some energy to start with and then ask you guys to think about short term rentals, you know, these bigger apartment buildings. What do you think, you know? Go back to the master plan. Decide, tell me what's in there, that kind of thing. Before we get into really tweaking what's in each zone, I think that would be a better a, a good, a good cleanup to start with, and then we'll work on things as we go.
So Rebecca.
I, I just, I'll be quick, Mike, I just wanted to thank you, June. It's super helpful to kind of see through your eyes what you're seeing that needs attention. What do you need from the planning? I mean, I heard nothing that I disagreed with. Do you need more direction from the planning board as you make this your work plan, or is it more informational? Like, do you need our support verbally?
I guess I want to let you guys know where I think the time would be best spent from just a structural sort of administrative point of view. And have you understand that, and I guess kind of, you know, say that, yeah, those are priorities and get sort of a nod from you guys about that. I think a lot of this administrative stuff, it will probably be best if I just spend a few hours, you know, or several days really working on it and come up with some drafts. It's not exciting stuff, you know, and I hopefully, hopefully the community will see that it's, it's going to make it better. You know, you never get it perfect, I know that, as much as I'd love to see a perfect zoning ordinance. But, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be a little harder to do by committee, you know, I think I could create some drafts and run by maybe a few of you to, you know, just take another look at it and, and see, and then come back to the board with that, if that's all right.
Yeah. Great. Mike?
So I would agree with what Steve just said, that, that was really interesting, how that was all laid out in front of us. And I've never had that type of presentation with the six or so planning people that are helping to run the, the planning board advisor, to see that all laid out the way that it was. Bravo. And I would love to be one of the people that you can use as a sounding board, June, to run by, and I know that's going to be a lot of work on your part, but whatever I can do to help, I'm willing to.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
I think a lot of it seems pretty technical too. So, I mean, obviously this took some time to pick this stuff apart and flipping back and forth through this ordinance can be tricky. So trying to even find this stuff, like, you know, it's there, but it's hard to find. So I think June, if you've got recommendations for some of that more technical stuff, because it's, it's so much easier for me to see when it's broken down in a slide in front of me, instead of me flipping through, you know, three different sections in the, in the zoning ordinance. So, yeah.
Well, it actually helped me a lot too, because I've been like, I, that's what I do, I just like flip pages around, come job shadow for a day or a few hours and see. I mean, we live, it was so funny, like, the, the storage container, I have to tell you the story, but we got one call about a storage containers and, and like, it was like 10 minutes later, somebody else calls about storage containers. I thought it was the same person. So I just started talking to him like it was the same person, it was somebody completely different. Anyway, it was just, yeah, it was somebody that called at first, it was a person, and I thought it was her son that was calling back. And so I was like, oh, yeah, I just talked to your mom about this. And he was like, what? Anyway, that aside, so I also think that because we still aren't open for public meetings, this is also a good time to do this technical stuff that is probably more for, you know, me and a handful of people to work on and not bore you guys to death with all the weed, getting in the weeds of what a rooming house is or something, if we can figure out what a tourist house, tourist home is, that sort of thing.
Will be the first time we've gone through that extensively as a board since I've been on the board, so, yeah.
So I guess, yeah, go ahead.
I, I was, no, the, the concept of a tourist house is interesting. I was impressed when I saw it in there and I was thinking like, oh, this, this could apply to, to Airbnbs, like, unless, you know, it's pretty, pretty close in line. You know, there's an evolution of the concept, I guess, over time, but I, I did have a question about signs, and maybe this is something you can look into, June, is that on the section of 408.8, non conforming signs, there is language in there that talks about calling attention to products, businesses that have not been carried or sold at the premises in the past six months, which leads me to believe that we don't permit off premise advertising. So that's something that has occurred to me in the past is, can you have a sign on a parcel advertising a, you know, service or a product that is sold at another parcel? Or, so, so, and that, that may be something that, I don't, I don't know if we clarify that, but you know, usually that's where billboards fall in, but you know, I've seen other businesses say, hey, we're, you know, we're including this sign on our site plan, but it's going to be over here on this other parcel. So I don't know if that's something we deal with, or if it's in there currently, but.
I have not gotten into signs yet.
Right. I'll just put them, put them there as a seed to think about when you're, when you're going, if you go.
Yeah. But if you look on page 25, section 408.4, we talk about billboard and non accessory signs. I don't know what the definition, yeah, billboards are basically advertising something that's not on that location.
Right.
So they are either not permitted, or they're only, they're only permitted by special exception in the highway, commercial, industrial, agricultural zone.
Yeah.
So you do not allow them downtown or in the other areas. So that, yeah, there's, there are, yeah, signs is another whole world in itself.
When you get into illumination of signs, you know, that, that can be a challenge too.
And the other area is parking. I think eventually I'd like to have some updates to that, because there's a lot of types of uses that fall under the category of other uses, and then the number of spaces is adequate spaces to accommodate customers, patrons and employees to be provided as determined by the planning board under its site plan review regulations. So the, a lot of it falls on the planning board to determine, like, how many parking spaces does a school need? That came up with the Mount Prospect Academy, it's like, I don't, I don't know, you know. It depends on the age of the students, if they have cars or not, you know, there's a lot of things that come up like that. So I didn't touch signs or parking yet, that'll be for another night. But why don't, I mean, if, again, I'm interested in time, I don't want to carry on too much more about zoning unless, unless you really want to, but.
Can I ask you a question, June?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, so, obviously, getting the ordinances all squared away is very important. I guess one of my questions, and if this doesn't fall under year round, I apologize, but what about enforcement of the ordinances? Who's in charge of that? And how often are we actually paying attention to enforcing what's on the books?
I was going to bring this up under my planner report, but I can just get into it now. I, I believe that, you know, enforcement's a really important part of the administration of an ordinance and yeah, it's, it's a, it's a tough thing to do in many cases for a lot of different reasons. And I am concerned about, you know, what has been being done. I, again, you know, I basically started in January, so it's, you know, I can drive around town and see some things that I've been there, you know, I know the community enough to know, know where to look and, and have some, some sites that I just, you know, in, as I go for a walk every day, pretty much at lunchtime, I walk by some places and I'm like, ah, it's been there for years, or ongoing problem. So, but I can say that we are making some effort to try to kind of get, get into the enforcement business a little bit better. There's a lot of legalities to it, a lot of things that we have to address in terms of doing it right, in terms of having really good record keeping. Because I think that, you know, you start with basically writing a letter to the property owner saying, hey, you know, you're in violation of this, this and this. And here's what you have to do to comply. The goal is always to gain compliance and hope to, hope that they will say, oh, gee, I'm so sorry, what do I do? Or give me a little more time and I'll do it. But usually do send a time limit on, you know, we give you 60 days to comply, depending on what it is. And then if they don't, then you send a formal notice of violation. And then there's different steps. And to be honest, there's a lot of pieces to it that I'm not as up to speed on, but at some point, we can start charging fees, penalties, you know, several hundred dollars a day if we took that route. And eventually it could end up in court and that, you know, so it's can be costly for the community to have all the legal representation. So we want to make sure we're doing each step along the way with excellent record keeping and doing it right. So we are talking about this. And I was going to mention it, that our building inspector, Brian Murphy, has, you know, been staying on part time. And he is in, starting next week, actually, he's going to be overlapping for a few weeks with Scott Whedon, who's going to be coming in to the town to do building inspecting. He's Scott's currently emergency management director, and he will be helping out some of the code enforcement too. So we're kind of, you know, in this transition period still too, so stay tuned on that. And I think that also we have to have a little bit better statements about enforcement in the, in the ordinance also. But that's really governed by state statutes to the process.
Thank you.
That's helpful.
Great question, by the way, and boy, behind the scenes, it's really interesting to see how the enforcement pans out. It's, it's a tough, tough subject, and you really nailed it with that question.
And again, doing it, doing it well and doing it right is, is important for, for protecting the town's efforts on it and make sure we're sending the good message and, and having everything. But there's definitely a few places that need some attention.
All right, other updates, June?
So I guess, just to summarize the zoning, I will work on these parts. I'm thinking that maybe for our work sessions, if I will bring to you next month what I can get done. I, it may be a little bit limited, but so I wanted Rebecca and I talk too about, maybe we can think about, I would also like to look at the zoning, excuse me, the subdivision and site plan review regulations too, and maybe have this kind of review of those, if that's all right, next time, if I have time to put that together or soon.
Yeah, I think that's good. I just, knowing that how dated everything is, and especially subdivision, I mean, we've been kicking the subdivision and site plan reg update down the road, we've been talking about it for probably two years at this point.
So. And just remind anybody, any zoning amendments are adopted by a town meeting time, but subdivision and site plan review are just adopted by the board after, the planning board after a public hearing. So it's a little bit, something we can do between now and town meeting time too. All right.
And do you remember offhand the bit about, I would, if, if a town votes to, or if a planning board approves a zoning amendment to go to the town, isn't there some language about it being treated as if it's in effect until the town meeting?
Yeah, there is. I don't remember exactly the timeline of when it gets posted, when it gets posted and then.
Right.
But if something was already filed prior to that, then it's
Right.
Kind of grandfathered in that.
Right, it would be under the previous, yeah, but then if, if it doesn't get approved, then it goes back to the existing zoning. But yeah, you kind of have to, if, if you, if the board approves something, and, and it can't be, you can't approve, if town meeting is on March 23rd, you, the planning board can't approve something on 20, March 24th, it's in effect for the next year. There's a limitation on how long it can be in effect in advance of town meeting. And I, I'm just trying to think about, you know, there are, I'm, I'm not pushing to do things early in, in reality, I'd rather wait and it, it creates a lot of confusion, because if you adopt, if the planning board approves something to go to the town as an amendment, then you kind of have to enforce it. And it's actually harder than if it's in the ordinance. So I'd rather wait until last minute to approve something if we can.
And the key, Phil, is when the applicant's application is accepted as complete, is, is that when the timeline starts?
Right. Or, or.
I'm not sure if it's when it's filed or when it's complete, but you know, those are the kind of statutes that I worry about when we get to that point. We can look into that. You raise a good point, yeah, we shouldn't be posting something and having a hearing for any amendments now, we wait till November, December, January kind of timeline. Okay, so other things that I was just going to update you on, I guess with this kind of state, this sort of, well, somewhat related to these things, but I, I am discovering in our office, you know, we, the, the town needs to work on some file keeping and just record, you know, we, the community is required to, by law, you know, by any community, to maintain a lot of our records for site plans and subdivision. It's basically the final approved one, we can, we can toss out earlier records, but we have to know which ones are which. And so, you know, we have a filing system in town hall, but for these bigger developments, they get big really fast. And now that we have building, adopted building codes, we also have building plans, say for Market Basket, you know, it's like this giant roll of paper. So we're kind of drowning in in some of this stuff in the last number of years, and we are also not very well organized. So when somebody wants to see, has a question about a, the road plan for a subdivision, because they're looking to buy a lot on a certain place, and they come in and they, you know, and I, all I've got is this messy pile to give to them, it's, it's not very good and they can't, you know, they're kind of like, well, where's the as built plan? And I'm like, I don't know, can't find it, I don't know if we ever got it. So I'm a little, you know, kind of discovering that there's some effort that needs to be done in the planning development side to have some better record keeping. I'm just kind of want you to know about that, I don't really quite figured out what to do. If you're ever in town hall and want to see a tour of the basement, I'd be happy to share, share a view. And I'm serious, it's worth looking at, or I can take some pictures of my office, take some pictures and share them with you, that might be safer.
You should get a storage container.
Oh, good idea. How about, I think we need two, you know. Very clever. So there, you know, I guess it kind of comes back to the busier we get and the more development we have and the more piles of paper we generate, it's all good stuff, but there is this sort of keeping of the records that 10 years later, you know, somebody wants to look at the plans, it's amazing where things come back, back around. So we're trying to work.
June, are the paperwork in cells down there?
Say that again?
The, the old jail cells or the holding cells, are they paperwork in those cells? Or, I'm just curious.
I don't know which is the old cells. There's a front room on the corner by the church on that side, that, that's where I've been spending some time in there, I don't know which areas the cells, so that's a good question, I don't know. But there's some stuff I've discovered, there's more in the back room, who knew? So I went in there the other day and I was like, oh, no, there's more. Anyway, so it's just, there's some time that's needed and, you know, I think at some point we need to actually spend a little bit of money on a file storage system of, for plans in particular, but that gets kind of costly too. So related to that, I want to really make sure when there, we do get our regulations updated quickly, I'm, we always require digital files to be submitted and maybe more, being more careful about the size of paper that we get plans on for continuity, because when you, yeah, it's, it's just, it's just how we, how we roll it up and store it is a problem. So, but nowadays, having some digital records too would also be really helpful. So I mentioned a couple of things, I did send to you. So I mentioned a couple of things. I did send to you guys today, this afternoon, the registration information for the Office of Strategic Initiatives, Planning and Zoning Conference. You can register yourself. There's no cost. It's a Saturday now in May. I forget the date. Please try to go if you can. You can go, the good thing is it's all online. So you could go to just a couple of sessions if you wanted and not have to go for the whole day kind of thing. If you haven't, if you have any concerns or don't want to register yourself, we can do that for you if that helps. So just, just wanted you to know that. Other than that, that's kind of my updates. Oh, and then do you want me to just go to the next piece, the draft agenda?
Yes, please.
Make sure you eat dinner before the planning board meeting on the 15th. So right now we are looking at, we have a continuation of the Fartherland Family Trust Site Plan Campground. I have still received no new information. So we'll figure out how to address that. We've got a subdivision application from Wasset Investments or whatever it is up on Texas Hill. And there's a little bit of a complexity to that one because it's, it's a parcel that has a conservation easement on it. So I, I haven't looked at these too closely yet. That's next week's work. Site Plan Review, we have received applications for the, from Integrity Ventures slash Aroma Joes. I have gotten those plans to our town engineer. We've gotten money from, in, holding it in escrow to have the plan redo, review done. And Mike Vicnally, the engineer is, is, will try to have, he said it shouldn't be a problem for you guys to have that prior to the 15th. Or at least, but I'm not sure he'll have it by that Friday before he's, he's pretty busy. We have a site plan review for an addition over at Three Lakes Landscaping on Hamilton Way, Hamilton Way and Tenny Mountain Highway. And Midstate Health Center is, has a change of use for a childcare center at a property on Tenny Mountain Highway. So they filed that. There's a few issues they might hold off until May, but that's one reason why I want to get this on here. We might have a preliminary discussion for a property that's looking at storage units and that's about it. So we've got a few applications. I just wanted to give you a little heads up about. Oh, and then, what, sorry, one more thing. Just a couple of updates. Riverside Landing, I just today got the two conservation easements. I haven't had a chance to look at them. And I did get a copy of their alteration of train permit application. So they've gotten that into DES. And I have drafted and given the developer, the development agreement. I have not heard back from him about that yet. So at least there is some progress since the last couple of weeks.
That's great. It's nice to hear about what happens post-approval as well, instead of just pre-approval. So, great. Unfinished business and other business from members of the board. I have one thing. Just wanted to mention, usually we're electing officers right about now, but since town meeting's been bumped later, our bylaws state that we do it our first meeting after town meeting. So we'll, we'll just make sure we do that then. So, any other business from the board? All right, any public comments? From folks? A few members of the public. Bridget, you're lucky. We have a full boarder, so I don't have to harass you about joining the board again. Or anybody else that's here, since we have a full board. But, all right, so with no public comments, thanks, thanks, June, and thanks everyone. I think this was a really productive meeting. I know I learned a lot. And I can just keep babbling until someone makes the. Second. I will read the role. Mike?
Hi.
Phil?
Hi.
Carl?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
I'm.
Mark?
Hi.
And me, Rebecca, I'm also an I.